Okay, let's get started. Good evening, everyone. Today is February 24th, and so we'll call to order the regularly scheduled February meeting of the Bernie ISD Board of Trustees. And so, let's see, establish quorum. We've got Carlin Fryer, Dallas Pipes, Maritza Gonzalez-Cooper, Dr. Kristen Kraft, myself, Kurt Wilson, Kristy Schmidt, Courtney Darter-Bruce, and Mr. Rich Senna. So everyone is here and accounted for. Before we go into closed session, there is a correction to Agenda Item 3F. The Architectural Services should read for Kendall and Sibyllo Creek Elementary Schools, not Carrington. I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda as corrected. We've got a motion, a second. Motion passes. Okay, so at this time, we will go into closed session to discuss Texas Government Code 551074, Deliberation Regarding Matters Related to Employment Appointments, Resignations, Terminations, Retirements, and Reassignments. Texas Government Code 5510821, Deliberation of Personally Identifiable Information About a Public School Student. Texas Government Code 551072, Discussion of Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property. Texas Government Code 551071, Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Legal Issues Concerning the Status of and Contract for the Aquatics Learning Center Project. Texas Government Code 551071, Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Legal Issues Concerning Improvements to Corley Road at Viola Wilson Elementary School and Associated Development Agreement. And lastly, Texas Government Code 551071, Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Legal Issues Concerning the Status of and Contract for Architectural Services for the Sibyllo Creek Elementary School and Kendall Elementary School Library Projects. So at this time, it is 5:02, and we will go into closed session. All right, everybody ready here? Yep, time to go. Good evening, everyone. It's about time to get going here, so we will reconvene back into open session at 6:31. We'll reestablish a quorum. We've got Carlin Fryer, Dallas Pipes, Maritza Gonzalez-Cooper, Dr. Kristen Kraft, Garrett Wilson, Kristy Schmidt, Courtney Darter-Bruce, and Rich Senna. So we've got everybody here. So at this time, Ms. Raina will turn over you for the pledge in a moment of silence.
The presentation of colors will be by the award-winning Bernie champion, JROTC Color Guard.
Colors. Ho. Present, colors.
Please join our students from Van Robb Elementary for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas inspired, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Order, colors. Color's turn. As you were. Colors. Ho. Color's turn. Ho.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence and prayer. Thank you, and please be seated. Mr. President and Trustees, our students from Van Robb Elementary have some great questions for you this evening.
Awesome.
Hello, my name is David Cooley. I'm at Van Robb, and I'm in fifth grade, and I'm the president. I'd like to ask you a question. Were you in student council or any other clubs when you were younger?
I'll take this one. I was a student council president in high school, so absolutely love what you're doing. I think starting this young at leadership is phenomenal, and I hope you continue to want to be a face in leadership and put your name out there and come up with the ideas that are going to be so positive for the changes in our school and your constituents there, as far as your students. So thank you for what you're doing.
Hi, my name is Amelia Kokamore. I'm from Fairon World. I'm in fourth grade, and I'm treasurer. And my question is, if you could have changed anything about school when you were younger, what would it have been?
You know, Amelia, that is a good question, and as I think of the answer to that, I look at all the opportunities that you kids have, both elementary, middle school, high school, and y'all have way more options to learn things than I did when I was in school. Of course, that goes back a few years, but I'm amazed. So what would I do differently? I would be, I would love to have been able to take advantage of some of the programs that you guys are going to have available.
Amelia, I have a question for you. Do you have any suggestions that you'd like to see at your school?
Well, sometimes standardized testing takes a little longer for other people, and we have to wait there for like, longer without doing anything.
Would you like to have a book or something to read maybe during that time?
Well, it could be either a book or like, something we can do, like, maybe like, a game to play with our friends at our table while we're waiting.
Okay, well, it'd be good to write, make a list, and we can always take a look at those. Maybe you present it to your principal.
Well, you know, Amelia, I think somebody's listening to you because there's a representative in Austin who filed a bill to shorten the STAR test, so maybe we won't have that problem. We'll see.
My name is Clara. I'm in fourth grade, and I'm the vice president. My question is, we recently, so we recently had CCMR Week at our school. What did you want to be when you grew up, and is that what you do now?
Good question. So when I was younger, I always wanted to be a teacher. I would, I always tell the story as I would come home from school and I would play school. And for Christmas, I would ask for red pens and chalkboards, and I just always had, I always had so much fun playing school with my little sister and all my stuffed animals. And so I did, I went to college to become a teacher, and I was substituting within my second year just to see like, what grade levels I liked, and so I became a teacher. And I think it does help me to be a better board member. What would you like to be when you grow up?
So I actually don't know right now because there are so many options to pick from.
And that's okay.
All right, let's give our students, oh, sorry, one more.
Next week is kindness week. Do you remember any specific event in your school years that you either witnessed or were part of an act of kindness?
I went to Bernie High School many years ago, and I remember that we had this activity of placing Post-it notes around the campus to encourage, and that's something that's kind of still stuck with me today. I love encouraging people, but little stick-it notes, just, it really can brighten someone's day. So like, you can stick them on your teacher's desk, or maybe outside on a wall somewhere, but I think like, words of encouragement go a long, long way, and that's something I remember and still love to practice today. So what do y'all have planned for next week? Something specific? I bet there's a lot of things, ways that we can be kind, and maybe you can look online, see if there's some good things you can research and keep asking questions, maybe stick-it notes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank y'all for coming.
All right, let's give them a round of applause. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. President, our trustees, and Dr. Kraft to join me on the floor for our commendations. Our first commendation, congratulations to the CREST Award winners. CREST stands for Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in Texas. Bernie High School, Bernie Middle School North, and Captain Mark Tyler Voss Middle School have been recognized for leadership. Bernie Middle School South, Sibyllo Creek Elementary, Fair Oaks Ranch Elementary, Van Robb Elementary, and Kendall Elementary are recognized as CREST Award winners. These schools exemplify the power of strong counseling programs, leadership, and unwavering dedication to student growth and success. Let's give them a round of applause for their hard work and commitment. Let's give them one more round of applause. Our next commendation recognizes Carrington PTO. Carrington PTO raised over $50,000 for their campus. Thanks to their hard work and the generosity of the Carrington families and local businesses, these funds will go towards shaped structures for their playground. This will help students stay cool and comfortable while they play and learn. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you again to Carrington PTO. Our next commendation recognizes an incredible community partner who continues to make a lasting impact on the safety of our schools. Stacy Almaguer from Hill Country Family Services has once again stepped up in a big way, raising an incredible $29,000 to fully fund LifeSpot for a third year. LifeSpot is a cutting-edge emergency response system designed to keep our students, teachers, and staff safe by providing real-time communication with law enforcement in crisis situations. Let's give Stacy a huge round of applause for her generosity and commitment to safety. We are thrilled to announce that Eric Gomez, our incredible SRO at Fabra Elementary, has been named Officer of the Year by the Bernie Police Department. Officer Gomez is more than just an SRO. He's a mentor, a protector, and a friendly face that our students, staff, and families trust every day. An amazing officer, an award-winning DJ. He's incredible. Let's give him a round of applause. Our next commendation is for Corporal David Chavez, School Resource Officer at Bernie Middle School North, for earning not just one, but two incredible honors from the Bernie Police Department, Supervisor of the Year, and Fit for Duty Male. Corporal Chavez goes above and beyond every day to keep our students and staff safe. Our final commendation recognizes School Resource Officer Ryan Cook from Sibyllo Creek Elementary School for being named Fit for Duty Female by the Bernie Police Department. This is an incredible recognition of her dedication, strength, and commitment to both her role as an SRO and her overall fitness. Let's give her a big round of applause for this well-deserved honor. This concludes our commendations for this evening.
Great commendations. Thanks, everybody. So we'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Raina.
All right, we're excited to share with you this month's Core Values and Action Student Recipient, Maddy Merkins, a remarkable fourth grader from Fabra Elementary. If you can, please roll the video.
This month's Bernie ISD Core Value and Action Student Recipient is Fabra Elementary fourth grader, Maddy Merkins. Maddy embodies all of the core values that Bernie ISD hopes its students will achieve. On a daily basis, she displays integrity, respect, accountability, perseverance, service, and compassion. Maddy is highly involved in her campus community by serving in the Fabra Early Act Club, Green Machine Run Club, and a member of the Fabra Dance Team. Outside of school, she stays busy by being active in 4H while also being a standout in sports, playing soccer, basketball, and softball. The two values that stand out the most of her would be perseverance and compassion. Maddy perseveres on a regular basis to meet those challenges. She is able to recognize her own strengths and weaknesses in the academic arena to enable her to grow and learn as much as possible. Maddy is the second president for the Early Act Club, which is a service club at Fabra Elementary. Her positive attitude and strong ethical principles make her a true role model within the school community and a great representative for the Early Act Club. Congratulations to this month's Core Value and Action Student Recipient, Maddy Merkins.
Awesome. Welcome, Maddy. Any questions for Maddy, anybody?
Oh, I got questions. Thank you for, thank you for all you do, and my daughters are at Fabra, so you're setting a wonderful example for my girls, and I appreciate that. But I saw you have animals, so I have to know, what is your most favorite animal, and most importantly, what is your least favorite animal of year?
My favorite animal is our cow, baby cow Lucy, and my least favorite animal is probably my chickens.
Well, Maddy, while we're on the subject of favorites, and least favorites, what in school do you think is your favorite subject and your least favorite subject?
My favorite subject is science, and my least favorite subject's reading.
Okay. Well, in the video, it talked about how you can overcome challenges. What is a way, maybe in a subject in school, that you've learned to like, overcome a challenge in the classroom?
Going to my teachers in the morning sometimes, and just going through problems and stuff.
Maddy, that's wonderful, and we're super proud of you. That's good.
I have a question. I know that you have big plans after you graduate. What are those plans going to be?
I want to be a vet at Texas A&amp;M.
Very nice. You'll make a great vet.
And so you're the president of the Early Act Club, is that correct?
The second president.
Okay, okay. So what, can you tell us a little bit about the Early Act Club, and what inspired you to get involved there?
Just serving for the, in the community and stuff.
Okay. And what do you guys do in the Early Act Club? What are some of the service projects that y'all do?
We go to Hill Country Daily Bread and help.
How do you keep track of everything that you're doing?
Stay to a schedule.
Awesome.
All right, let's give her a round of applause. And if your parents are here, if you could raise your hand if you're Maddy's parents. Thank you very, very much. Next up is tonight's BEF Wow Moment. We visited Sibyllo Creek Elementary, where toy bins are making a big impact by fostering positive student interactions. Let's check out this incredible grant in action.
Hi, my name is Kenzie. Welcome to Sibyllo Creek Elementary School. Today's Wow Moment will be in the CCES conference room.
Here at Sibyllo Creek Elementary, we have students occasionally that come to the office, and it can be for various reasons. We try to make it a positive time up in the office. We don't want it to be a scary place. And when they come up, I'm not always available, or other admin is not always available. Sometimes if we pull out an activity and kind of get started with that, and the student relaxes a little bit, they will start kind of sharing what happened. So it's a way to kind of de-escalate the situation, help calm a child, make them feel a little bit more comfortable where they will talk. So I got these bins with my grant money. We can pull one of these bins, kind of let the kids interact with it, start talking. Oh, you were right, that one. Oh, that one was just a little bit faster, but I think they're almost the same time. They get that social skill piece that we can then start communicating what the problem is, how we can help support them, and then we return them to class.
Thank you for supporting every student, every teacher, and every school in Bernie ISD.
That wraps up the inspiring videos for this evening. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Raina. Okay, so that takes us through to visitor comments and testimonials. We do not have anybody signed up to speak tonight, so we'll pass through that one. The next up would be approval of the agenda. We are going to strike under Section 9C Administrative Services, the special education. We're going to move that to a later board meeting. So with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Great. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, the agenda is approved. Okay, and then consider action if any regarding items discussed in closed session. That takes us to the personnel report. Do we want to do the introduction prior to the motion, or the approval, or after? Okay, well, I would entertain a motion to approve, then the personnel report.
President, I move the Board of Trustees approve the personnel report as discussed in closed session.
Second.
I got first, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Excellent. Well, that leads us to our special guest tonight. Excellent.
Coach Leach, could you come forward and introduce an important new position, a new hire?
I will. Thank you, Dr. Kraft. We're excited. We're all excited. It was great to see all of y'all, and of course, I guess we want to turn everywhere. I'll turn to y'all. This was a seven-year interview because Chloe was just a little baby when they came seven years ago, and now she's seven. And through those seven years, you know what Bernie football has become. In those seven years, we've won 71 games, and we made the top 100 in the Dave Campbell, you know, we all know about Dave Campbell, and our new head coach, athletic coordinator, Brett Sawyer, is a major part of that.
Congratulations, Coach Sawyer. We look forward to a bright future under your leadership. We invite you to say a few words and also introduce any special guests you have.
All right. Well, thank y'all, first off, for the opportunity. We are so excited. This has been, like you said, seven years of an interview, and for this to work out and be what it is, we couldn't be more thankful to y'all, to Dan Leach, Shane Wilson, everybody was a part of that. The whole process was great, and can't be more excited to lead the Greyhounds, and it's a dream come true for us, for sure. And people with me today, my wife, Tinesse, she teaches ag at Bernie, and we've been here seven years. My oldest daughter's at a soccer game, Bets Memorial. They're playing tonight. They're up three to nothing, in case anybody's wondering. It's a big win. We need it. My second daughter is Kira. She's a sophomore at Bernie High School, and is varsity cross-country and volleyball. And Camden is a seventh grader at North, and she plays all the middle school sports. And then little Chloe is my second grader at Carrington, and she rounds out all four of my daughters, and they all do ag and lambs, and we are diehard Bernie and bleed purple. And thankful to them, my poor wife is going to, her life changes dramatically. This isn't just a hire for one person. This is a family hire, and couldn't be more excited as a family to be able to represent Bernie and Bernie High School and this community that we love. Thank y'all.
Well, congratulations. We'll take some pictures.
Wonderful. Well, excited to have you, Coach Sawyer and family. It's going to be great, great for the whole community. So with that, let's see, well, we already did the approval there. Okay, so let's move to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Excellent. The consent agenda is approved. Thanks, everybody. Next up, we've got Board Member Reports. Anybody want to start, and then we go counterclockwise?
I'll start.
All right.
Want to do it that way?
Sure.
Perfect. So I'll report on the Facilities Committee. We had a meeting last week discussing a number of items. Talked about our Middle School North Focus Group, site visits, and teaching and learning is taking care of leading that information and gathering the information, and we'll have a good debriefing next month. We're working on EdSpecs, or Educational Specifications, through the firm Huckabee in the development of educational specs to assure alignment with the ISD's vision and compliance with TEA. Talked about traffic analysis studies that are ongoing. We're working with the city of Bernie and Texas to assess some findings and some necessary options around some of our campuses. Received a budget update on the bond projects that are in process. Most of those projects are completed and under budget, and we've got a couple of remaining projects that are still outstanding. And then we'll be able to determine final bond savings on that. Talked about the improvements of Corley Road, which is the road that goes behind Viola Wilson Elementary School, the development, the agreement that we have with the developer to widen that road, but we can't tie into that road until it's widened, or we become responsible for widening it, so we don't want to do that. We'll obviously have a resolution in a little while to talk about that. Talked about the Aquatics Learning Center, some pending items or the key pending items. Talked about the Aquatics Learning Center, some pending items or the key pending items that need to be completed or the right turn lane, landscaping, paving around the parking lot, and then the pool. And then we've done an inventory of all of the equipment and everything that is still on site, and working with that contractor to hopefully get that racked up in the next month or so. The other capital construction projects, we've got some punch list items at Champion's, the P-Tech addition, and then the four legacy libraries that have been updated. And then we're working with the Chamber to hold ribbon cuttings in the spring or in the next couple of months on all of those projects. Some other bond savings projects, Champion High School tennis court resurfacing is complete. They're working on the band pad. Substantial completion is expected at the end of April. And then they're working on options for parking in the next couple of years at Champion as well, just some ideas at this point in time. The Bernie High School Competition Gym Painting Project is complete, and Central Office Academy Improvements Project is on schedule. And finally, Dr. O'Hare is in the absence or departure of Mr. Stahl. Dr. O'Hare is working with transportation, routing software upgrades, improve customer service and mapping to the families, and hopefully we have a better start next year around transportation than we did this year. That wrapped up the Facilities Committee meeting. I think that's the only one I had.
All right, I'll go Systems of Care. We had our meeting on February 6th earlier this month. The Bernie ISD System of Care Advisory Committee, its purpose of System of Care is to deliver comprehensive, coordinated, and collaborative services to students with complex needs and their families. This month, System of Care Advisory Committee members received a program update that highlighted work from the first semester. The committee received an update developing the System of Care Center, first phase of the Care and Share Center, provided families with resources such as food and clothing when they experience a crisis. Students in the 18 and up program assist students support services in gathering and organizing clothes. This month, students at Fabra Elementary have collected hangers to help us display the clothes. Shelving is beginning to be built for storing food. Families can begin accessing resources in February, so I imagine right now. Probably the most exciting part of our meeting was the committee members also held the opportunity of considering a logo for the Care and Share Center. Members reviewed eight logos and provided feedback and chose one design. If you have had the opportunity of choosing a logo, I recommend doing it with elementary kids. It is so much better whenever there's an eight-year-old and a 12-year-old and a high school student. This is truly going to be a logo that represents the community. I'm really excited to see how this all turns out, so. And if you would like to get more information, the next meeting's going to be April 3rd.
I had a P-Tech, Cyber P-Tech Committee meeting, and it was our first one, so it was more of a meet and greet. We have a great collection of parents that are volunteering, community members, so I'm excited to be part of this committee, and I'll have more information hopefully next time after our next meeting. We got to tour the facility, and of course, it's a beautiful facility, and looking forward to the ribbon cutting for that.
Great. We, so as liaison to the Bernie Education Foundation, we did have a BEF Board Meeting, which was really, really good meeting, covered a lot of ground. We've got the Rock On, the annual fundraiser, March 29th. So everybody pull out your calendars and mark it down. March 29th at 7:00 PM at the Kendall County Equestrian Center. So everybody keep in mind that, get your pocketbooks open and be ready to donate. We've also got, the deadline for silent auction donations is March 7th. If anybody's got any plans for that, March 7th, get with the local BEF folks and make sure you get those donated. The theme this year is Rock On and Music City Nashville Nights, so should be fun. There's a lot of good plans there. And then we had the Finance Committee meeting this month as well. We went through a lot of numbers. We discussed just different scenarios for what the budget would end up looking like at the end of June 30th, our fiscal year. And Mr. Scott walked us through a lot of those. And then we talked about a lot of other different scenarios, depending on what the legislature does and that sort of thing, and we'll dive into those a lot deeper in the upcoming budget workshops, so. That's what I had.
As the PTO President Liaison, we had our meeting on February 7th. We had a guest speaker from the Rock House to talk about the Spirit Store there and opportunities for fundraising. We had a BEF guest speaker speaking on BEF, like Mr. Garrett mentioned. We had district updates from Dr. Kraft and Dr. O'Hare that consisted of attendance and enrollment, spring events, the NSPRA report, which is our communications audit, as well as a demographic report. And as always, we ended the meeting with campus collaboration time for all of them to kind of discuss what's happening at each of the campuses as one group, and our next meeting will be on March 21st.
Thank you, Kristy. I'm going to talk about the Communications Meeting that was on January 28th. We got to meet and visit with our new Executive Director of Communications, Dr. Maggie Dominguez. So she was in the meeting for the first time, and we got to hear from her, which was exciting. We were also enlightened on the audit recommendations. We got to hear of the summary of the 10 recommendations from the recent audit. So it's interesting and exciting to see what's in the future, what was recommended and things that can be implemented and shared to make us even better as a district in regards to communication. We also were shown a Teach and Tell video, was so cute, these students from Fabra. They did an elf on the shelf project, and they were trying to entice the elf into a box. And so we got to see how they use their critical thinking skills and communication with their classmates to figure out a method to get the elf in the box, and it was really cute to see their collaboration. And so it'll be exciting to see future Teach and Tell videos that take place around our wonderful district to really brag on our students and our amazing teachers as well. So that's to come. Also, what many of you probably have already seen is the new website that was just launched, and we got to go through that and just hear all the great feedback as far as how many people were being reached. And we did learn that people were accessing the website frequently on their phone, and it's very user-friendly from your phone device, which is an upgraded feature of the website. So I think it's great to see how they took a lot of community feedback and really made some changes, made some changes, and the information on there very easy to access. We also saw, we did a show and tell of the BISD Studio, and Eric Armenta showed us the great room that has foam on all the walls, and they wanted us to do a solo and broadcast it live for the district, but we opted out of that. Just kidding. But they nominated me for a video, and I declined and actually sent Dr. Kraft away on that one. So, but it was really exciting to see how all these improvements are being made, and they're utilizing spaces that we already have and made a room that's highly functional for the Bernie beat, and it's really neat to see how that has evolved over time. So the next meeting would be March 19th, and there'll be more exciting things to come. Another wonderful committee I'm blessed to be a part of is the Student Health Advisory Committee with Krista Pomeroy leading us, leading the charge. And what I love, the focus is parents are partners, and I've seen that firsthand in everything that we discuss and the community members that are present, invited to come, that we really are partners with the school district. So it's empowering as a parent just to see, you know, we share feedback on certain topics of having health, healthy bodies, healthy minds, health education, appropriate health practices, and modeling positive and healthy behaviors. So this is something we want to be able to communicate with our families. Again, parents being partners. So we got to review the committee recommendations for parent guidance and the use of technology and social media. So the SHAC, we worked to research and identify strategies that would assist parents in making healthy decisions related to child's overall screen time, which we know is an escalating topic, and the use of technology and engagement with social media. So all of the topics that were covered, I feel like they're on the forefront of a lot of parents' minds, and so the heart and soul of this committee is just to be able to walk alongside of parents and help them, you know, with strategies, whatnot, to be equipped to help our kids in this technological world that we live in and how to remain healthy through those times. So it was great. We got to hear from the Hill Country Council for Drug and Alcohol Abuse, and they presented some amazing opportunities to showcase some free workshops, instruction interventions on healthy choices and decision-making. I had inquired about a couple programs that they offered, and they quickly emailed me just with all kinds of feedbacks. I feel like they're really eager to be partners with us, and so as a committee, we all agree that they look like a really great group to partner with. We got to preview the Too Good for Drugs course materials, and we got to ask a lot of questions, and again, really be partners with the school district was, is such a blessing to be a part of that. So our next meeting will be April 8th, and I'm sure I'll have some more exciting things to report on at the next board meeting. But thank you for leading us, Krista. Appreciate it.
Rich, do you mind if I jump in front of you real quick? I forgot one. I was on the Technology Committee. We met February 5th. I love this committee. I'm a big on technology, I think that's the future here. So we are able to speak to the internship programs that we have going on. The Technology Services Department has five interns working with our technology staff, two Champion High School P-Tech cybersecurity students working with cybersecurity directly, or director, three Champion High School students working with our technicians in help desk as they support teachers and staff, one adult intern, this is really unique, who is working alongside the technology staff assisting with various technology projects and gain experience as he works towards meeting his college requirements. Also, we talked about the Chromebook replacements, replacing 2,940 Chromebook batteries across the district, expect to be completed February 14th, so that should be done. Middle school Chromebooks for college career readiness. Technology Services deploy two Chromebook carts with 34 devices each to middle school for college career readiness classes. Cybersecurity assessment. Bernie ISD Technology Services was approved to receive a cybersecurity assessment as part of a grant for the Texas Education Agency. This assessment evaluates current practices against the standard framework. Really, another thing that we're going to be doing with our interns, we're going to try to have them in on this board to give us some insight. I think they're going to be a really valuable part of this board as we kind of see their side of things, but also they get to see what that side of the world looks like. So I think that will prepare them really well. Next meeting is going to be March 26th.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the Legislative Advocacy Update. I'll apologize in advance, it's, there's quite a bit in here, but I think it's important that we stay on top of what the legislature is doing as whatever bills they pass have a tremendous impact on our district and on our financing. Just as a review, the four priorities that we adopted last August before the start of the session was an increase in the basic allotment, which is the funding vehicle that funds public schools to address teacher pay, create and fund a permanent teacher retention allotment. A lot of folks in Austin have been talking about for years teacher pay, and the best way to do that is to just take a big chunk of the budget and say, hey, we're dedicating this to expanding teacher pay throughout the state. Third one is increase state support for school safety. In the last session, they adopted an increase in support for school safety, but it covers about 20% of our costs. The proposal this year is to double that to 40, which is, it's a help, which is good. And then, of course, continued property tax relief and, and that we realize that school property taxes are the largest chunk of a homeowner and business owner's taxes. Couple of things, opportunities and challenges in this session. There's $24 billion available in the general fund, that's a large amount of money, but education's competing with a lot of other things. Water infrastructure, the head of the Water Caucus, Senator Perry, was looking for $5 billion in fusion into long-term capital water projects in the state with the estimate that we're going to reach like 45 million people by 2040 or 2050, and we need water for that. Well, you got two and a half, not the five. The energy grid to avoid what happened a few years ago. Teacher pay, it's an emergency item, as I mentioned, and when the governor cites something as an emergency item, that means that it can be addressed in the first 60 days of the session. Normally, bills aren't even looked at in the first 60 days, but for emergency items, they want quick action. And school choice, or what is termed school choice, was also deemed by the governor an emergency item. And of course, there's always a push for property tax relief and border security. So those are the key things that you're going to see in the session. Since our last board meeting, we've expanded our Legislative Advocacy Committee. Dallas and myself, along with Sarah Lynn Wolf, whose kids are at Champion High School, we went up and testified before the Senate Appropriations Committee. We got our two minutes of fame each. You know, you drive up there, four hours round trip, you wait hours for these things to start, and you get two minutes. But you know, hey, they remember Bernie, I know that, they remember Bernie. And then the next day, I actually went back to Austin because I was invited by Senator Vettencourt, who's the chairman of the Senate, he's on the Senate Finance Committee, no, excuse me, the Senate Government Relations Committee. He invited me to testify on behalf of property tax relief. Senate Bill 4, which would increase the homestead exemption from $100,000 to $140,000. That means an extra $40,000 of your home value is shielded from school tax rates, which would be about a $400 savings to our average homeowner. That passed the Senate on a unanimous bipartisan vote of 31-0. It goes to the House now, we'll see what the House does. Several of us attended the TASB Texas Association of School Boards Legislative Update last week. We've had follow-up visits with legislators. There was teacher pay recommendations. I met with the chief Senate Education Committee aides because their original proposal allocated a $4,000 raise for teachers in districts above 5,000 students and 10,000 below. And we had done a study a couple of years ago that that would put certain districts in Bear County, like Alamo, it's at a tremendous advantage over their neighboring districts. And out here in the Hill Country, it would put us at a disadvantage to some smaller districts. So we asked for them to compress that gap of 6,000, and that was done in their next, I don't know, that was because of us, but I mean, apparently, we weren't the only ones complaining about it. So they made some tweaks to their proposal, which we'll go through, okay? And we've had some communication with the Lieutenant Governor's Office. Want to spend some time going over school choice because we're all going to get questions because it's a hot topic and everyone's talking about it. And I'll just put the definition, it's a program or policy in which students are given the choice to attend a school other than their district's public school, whether it be a charter, private homeschool, or a public school in a different district, open enrollment. That's what is a common definition of that. And the question will be asked, does school choice exist in Texas? And it depends who you ask. Some people will say yes, some people will say no, and there's actually quite a bit of school choice. Even if you look in our own district, kids have high school choice. There are transfers at the elementary and middle school level. We've got two P-Tech programs, that's choice. If you're a student at Champion, you want to do culinary, you can shuttle over to Bernie High School. So we've got tremendous amount of choices within our own school district. But 32 states in the Union have some form of school choice. Just a little bit of note on, what is the K-12 population in Texas? Traditional ISDs, there's a little over 1,000 of them, 8,000 campuses in every single county, and we serve 5.1 million students. Public charter schools, they're considered public schools. There's 404,000 of them in 40 counties, mostly urban and suburban counties. Private schools, there's a little over 300,000, and they're in 132 counties. But remember, there's 254 counties in the state, so a lot of counties don't even have private schools. And then homeschools, there's almost 400,000. So overall, it comes to about 6.1, 6.2 million students in the state of Texas. Senate has pushed for what's called education savings accounts. What are those? They're designed to assist students enrolling in private schools. They're available to all Texas K-12 students, all 6 million. It would grant a $10,000 per year education savings account and a larger amount for special ed students, and at least $2,000 for homeschool students. And here's where you will see a difference between the Senate version and the House version, and an extra amount for homeschool. and an extra amount for homeschool students with disabilities. The budget funds 100,000 ESAs over the two years of the next biennial budget, which is 50,000 students a year. When the money runs out, it runs out. That's what now critics of this have said. Well, you know, it starts off at a billion, then it goes to 2 billion, then it goes to 3 billion. It could very well be. But at this point, for those two years, that's what it comes to. The House, what's different? Well, instead of 10,000, they say 85% of the of the state and local revenue based on the funding formulas. Now, we get less money per student on the funding formulas in the average district in Texas. I think Wes, I think we're about 1,500 less, not federal, just state and local. I think we're 15, 17, 1800 less than the state average. Yeah, but that includes, does that include federal money? Okay. All right. So but the bottom line is, since we have less money per student than the state average, 85% of our lesser amount would mean that those students within our school district who would apply for these would be eligible for less money. That's all that means. And the logic behind this, that Chairman Buckley from the Education Committee of the House put into this was that he realizes public school is more expensive because we do special ed and private schools are not obligated to provide special ed services, and that's a huge cost. There is greater prioritization for lower income students in the House bill versus the Senate. There is prioritization in the Senate bill, but the House bill has some more guardrails. And the House bill caps homeschool ESAs at 2,000, where the Senate says it could be at least 2,000. And I think if you talk to most homeschool parents, I've got a number in my Sunday School class. It ranges anywhere from 400 to 1,500, depending on which program you have. So it seems to me that the 2,000 is a pretty generous amount, unless you send your child to one of these hybrid homeschool, private school type situations. And they fund the same amount, 100,000 over the next two years. It would be managed by the Texas Controller, not by the Texas Education Agency. They would establish five educational assistance organizations to screen the applications. If there are more applications than available money, priority goes to, once again, lower income and special ed students. And as I mentioned earlier, the Senate bill and the House bill have different income parameters. Questions to consider. Would ESAs assist low to moderate income students or become an entitlement for the wealthy? This is a debate. In some states, it's 60, 70, 80% of the money goes to students already at private schools. The proponents of it here in Texas maintain the the focus on low to moderate income would prevent the same thing from happening here. Time will tell. But many people feel that in these other states, it's become an entitlement for high income folks. How would this affect our local schools? That's really hard to say, but in light of the fact that income in Kendall County is higher than the state average by a lot, we're like the fourth or fifth wealthiest county in the state. I would think you just have less eligible people applying. We have a good school system here. So it's hard to say. One political group came out and said we would lose $4 million, and how on earth they came up with that is beyond me. That means we would lose like 400 to 500 kids. And that, when you do the math and you see that there's 50,000 statewide, it just it's impossible. So I think you've got proponents on both sides of this issue that kind of play fast and loose with the facts to justify their particular point of view. And another question is, are ESAs truly parental choice or is the private school's choice? Because private schools can turn down who they admit. It's kind of like a country club. And will private schools be held to the same accountability standards as in STAR? So these are some questions to think about. The Senate Bill 26, which passed, it passed the Education Committee in a unanimous bipartisan vote. The original budget of the Senate was 4,000 raise for teachers, 5,000 students and above, 10,000, 5,000 and below. Now it's really based more on longevity. For those with three or four years as a classroom teacher, they would get a $2,500 raise in in larger districts and 5,000 in the smaller districts. And once you hit five years, it would be 5,500 in larger districts, of which we would be considered, and 10,000 for those below below 5,000 students. That is a substantial amount of money. That's $5 billion. So what the Senate is doing, and they and they said it in their hearings, we are going to focus, we are going to tell districts where the money needs to go. We want to stress teacher pay. And that that is what they're pushing. That's wonderful. So there's also an expansion of the teacher incentive allotment. Public school teachers can be added to the list of kids who qualify for pre-free pre-K services. That already is the case in some districts. And it eliminates the requirement that 30% of any base allotment increase goes to teacher compensation. They've just waived that. The total expenditure over the biennium is $5 billion from the from this proposal. House Bill 3 is the funding. Actually, I'm not sure if it's House Bill 2 or House Bill 3. I did this late last night. But anyway, it's the one that funds the money. It increases the basic allotment from 6,160 to 6,380. There is no increase in the Senate. The Senate puts all their money into teacher pay. That's it. No special ed, no basic allotment, nothing. It changes the percentage of of any basic allotment increase that goes to fund teacher pay from 30% to 40%. But when you do the math, it really doesn't come to a large amount of money. This is not some 3, 4, $5,000 raise. It's just not. It dramatically increases special ed funding. The feeling is that there's a shortfall of about $3 billion, 3, 3.5 billion dollars a biennium in special ed funding that districts are paying, the state does not reimburse them for. So this increases special ed funding, I think, by 1.8 billion. It has other targeted operational support, pre-K, fine arts. Creates a fine arts allotment, but it's very, very small, and it has an annual cap of $15 million, which comes to nothing. It would be like $30,000 to a district like Bernie. But the total comes to 7.6 billion. So it's more than the Senate, but they're dividing up their revenue in a lot of different ways. What's going to happen? Who knows? The House will pass their bill, the Senate will pass their bill, then they're going to have to do a conference committee and figure it out. And before we adopt a budget, the hope would be, knock on wood, that they pass the bills before we have to adopt a budget. We get financial runs to indicate what it means to us so that Mr. Scott can sleep at night and we can sleep at night, and we take it from there. Okay? Other House bills, House Bill 4 is to eliminate the STAR test and reinstate the A to F school rating. And that is Chairman Buckley in the right-hand picture there. He's the one that, but you know, it would be replaced by a a shorter test of a more diagnostic nature. So that's what he's proposing. House Bill 6, also referred to as the Teacher Bill Rights, enhances options for schools to remove disruptive students from the classroom. And House Bill 123 creates additional tools. I don't know what those tools are. I didn't read the bill. I just was taking notes from all these things that I get from the legislature. Okay, so in any event, there's probably 200 or 300 bills related to education, but the biggies are the ones that that I put here. So what's next for us? We just have to keep our eyes open as to when they have hearings that are relevant to bills that we care about. Dallas loved testifying, didn't you, Dallas? No, he did a good job. And Sarah Lynn, we have a star in the making, telling you. She was she was so good. She said, you know, we, my family, we moved, I'm going to quote, "My family, we moved here during COVID from California." And she's appealing to the majority in the Senate. "We came here as refugees, not missionaries." So everyone laughed. They thought that was funny. And so in any event, she did a great job talking about how her kids have prospered in Bernie ISD with all the wide variety of programs we have. And then a failure to increase funding for public ed could potentially put some of these programs at risk, which we certainly hope is not the case. But that was her fear as a parent who heartily approves of the education that her children have received in public schools here in Texas. And that's kind of it. That's kind of the update. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I think from that testimony, that that first day, not the day you were at, it was echoed many, many times about the basic allotment being the vehicle to fund public schools. I think the Senate, hopefully, after they see what the House did, kind of hopefully can both come to some type of agreement. I don't think it's going to be what everyone wants, but I see there there's probably going to be some consent with that meeting to be adjusted. Also, the other one that's going to be, I think, everyone's going to approve is teacher pay. That's hopefully going to become more in line with, I think that is something that's guaranteed to pass from our conversations, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. But what that looks like, something that we talked about a little bit was the size of districts and what what I consider. I'm trying to think of the verbiage they use there, but I would like to see something more geographically separated from an urban center. Because I know you're going to have some school districts that are in the middle of an urban center, and their population of that school district are small. Therefore, they're going to be competing with already an advantage, even would give them a more of a hand up. So I'd like to see that be more of adjusted. I think in fairness, you you hope to see that. I'm not too worried about our surrounding district, but definitely in the inner cities, giving a school that's already has a major advantage to the surrounding areas, giving them more so, I think, is a deferment to what they're trying to accomplish.
I think you're absolutely right, Dallas, and that's something we're going to have to really keep an eye on. And we gave we gave them very specific examples of where that concept could be abused. I think the attractive aspect, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I've heard this from folks in Austin. 83% of the of the districts have less than 5,000 kids. And if you've been a teacher for five or more years, the notion of giving you a $10,000 raise to 83% of the ISDs is a powerful political statement. So if you want to run for reelection, and you know, these guys are politicians, but you know, so that's you have to understand the mind of of who you're, so you you try to tweak it and, you know.
I mean, I I think that's that's you're 100% right. They're you're running for votes. So, you know, that's a very popular one. But I think the the same could be true of saying, you know, what you're, you know, within 20 miles of a metroplex of a million people or more. I think that would withstand probably the same amount of districts.
Yeah. So the bottom line is, we just got to pay attention and and do a lot of driving. Yeah. So.
Thanks, Rich and Dallas, for the Legislative Update. And Sarah Lynn, too. Sarah Lynn Wolf. That's great that she's involved, and we just appreciate you guys doing that. And everybody who went to Austin this last time, about a month ago, to advocate for more funding for the school district. You know, I tell people a lot, if people knew how much work that Rich and Dallas and and some of the folks up here, especially especially Rich, put into making sure our public schools are funded and that our our staff are getting the raises that they deserve from from the state and the state legislature here in the next or in this legislative session, people, I think, would be extremely appreciative. Some of the some of the influence that I'd say that Bernie has in the state legislature is pretty remarkable for our our school districts. So appreciate you all, all the work there and all the time and driving to Dallas or driving to Austin and meeting with everybody and testifying, so.
I think they know who Bernie is.
What was that?
They know who Bernie is.
Yeah, they do. Exactly. They absolutely do. Awesome. Well, great. Well, Dr. Kraft, you're you're up.
All right. Well, thank you. I just want to echo Mr. Wilson's comments. I want to say thank you to our board, our team of eight. You are nonstop working, and you could tell from your reports tonight. You're deeply involved in our committees and advocating for our school district. And Mr. Senate, thank you so much for always giving us the latest rundown and all the legislative action taking place. I'm just another example of your advocate, everyone's advocacy and involvement and passion for Bernie. So just a few quick updates. Our current enrollment as of Friday was 11,114 students. Tonight, you're going to hear a full report from Larissa Flores on our academic performance report from last year. So many things to be proud of. And last week was CCMR week. You heard our Van Robb students talk about CCMR. And I was at one of the career days over at HRF, but every campus did a phenomenal job and just oodles of parents in the hallways, in the classrooms, sharing their careers. Parents were very excited, and I just want to say thank you to the principals and counselors and all the staff at schools who helped put on such remarkable experiences for our kids, our parents to have a great experience sharing their careers with our students. We received some exciting news last week from Renee Munn about our pre-K program. The Bernie Pre-K Program was selected to be featured at the Technical Assistance for Excellence in Special Education Leadership Summit. It's a conference for state leaders in special education, and we are one of only four districts in Texas that were chosen to be a model and present. So congratulations to Ms. Flores and the pre-K team, our pre-K teachers, our principals, our coaches, everyone who touches early childhood education, because our students start strong, and we need them strong every single year as they move on through our system. And we're excited for them to share the Bernie story. As you know, basketball is one of my favorite sports. March Madness is around the corner, and our HRF Hawks, our third graders there, they advanced to the Sweet 16 for the Final Four. So we want the HRF Hawks to keep on reading, and hopefully, they'll make it down to all the events down in San Antonio as they push on towards the Final Four. Our Budget Strategy Advisory Committee wraps up our meeting series tomorrow night. We are so thankful for such a strong, robust group of parents. We had a number of them come in last week, and they did some videos for us. Mr. Dr. Dominguez is putting together infographics and video clips with Mr. Armenta, doing fantastic work to build the advocacy support tools that our parents are going to need. And Mr. Scott and I just wrapped up our staff meetings for the month of February. So Mr. Scott and I went to every campus for a staff meeting the month of February to give them key updates and insights into financial long-term planning and what we're what we are seeing in the legislative session. So it was great to see every staff member and give them a chance to ask questions. And they were appreciative of of hearing it firsthand and not being an email or video clips of just sending, you know, spending time in person with all of our staff. Was important. And then I just want to bring you a real quick update. And first of all, thank you for your commitment to addressing needs of our school district. So in the fall, we brought you a number of compensation adjustments through good data and really digging into contracted services and really studying where we could be operationally efficient as possible. And so to share with you, in the fall, when you gave a raise of $1.25 to hourly staff, in the fall, we had 18 custodial vacancies. 18. And guess how many we have now? Zero. Maybe one came in, but it was it was fantastic. And so I just want to say thank you to your commitment for Strategic Resource Management and also our talent team and the operations team for getting the word out, being creative with hiring practices and filling those positions.
Dr. Kraft, I mean, I I'd like to hear a little bit more. That that is, because it wasn't that many months ago that we approved that, and that is fantastic news, but I I have to believe it's more than just the rate. The raise obviously helped. But I'd like to hear, Jill, maybe you could share some of the things that you've been working on all year, because you don't fill 18 vacancies like that.
If it'll work, there it goes. So the I brought in Nadine Espinoza, who's the Director of HR, and she is very talented. And one of the first things that she did was really assess our staffing needs in our auxiliary area, meeting with the operations folks to to understand what the what the needs were. We also started collaborating with those departments, and they started attending job fairs with us. So we've been targeting specific job fairs at with Workforce San Antonio, Workforce Kerrville, as well as the Red, White &amp; New events. And we've even had a lot of our custodians who are providing referrals for us for from friends of theirs that want to enter the district. So we've been trying to reach out in a lot of different areas that maybe haven't been done in the past, and it's been really successful. And it's a great credit to Nadine and her team and the work they've been doing.
Do we have a referral bonus program?
At this time, we do not.
Wes, I mean, I know that I'm going to talk about spending money, but you know, it's not a bad idea. I had that in my old company. We would give our our employees a referral bonus. And it because the best compliment to your organization is when your own people say, hey, this is a good place to work. And we were voted like the best place And we were voted like the best place in San Antonio a couple of years ago to work. So, you know, how much could it cost? Right, Wes?
We'll.
You don't have to answer that now, Wes.
So just a few other updates to share. Uh, the state of the district does take place on Thursday. Very excited, uh, to, to deliver, um, an update to our wonderful community and I want to thank Kim Blum and the Bernie Chamber of Commerce for hosting that great event. We look forward to sharing, um, some exciting success stories and highlighting a few of our students. And then I'll just end with saying thank you to Garrett and Dallas for taking the polar plunge, uh, on Saturday. Appreciate y'all doing that for us and supporting Special Olympics.
I have to say Garrett is, I thought, I'm in sales, but Garrett's a much better salesman than me. He talked his wife into doing it and how you pulled that off, I'm still very impressed.
She killed it. She could, but did, did we get the picture of Dallas doing the polar plunge? Were, are we going to put that up or? It didn't, didn't get a, it didn't make it into the slide deck? I don't. Yeah, okay. Okay.
So just another example of how our trustees give and give, um, seven days a week. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Yeah, it's going to be mandatory next year, just, uh, everybody, everybody knows. Uh, yeah, and the, and the new, yeah, why does it be up to you? Um, excellent. Thank you very much. All right, great. Uh, so let's see, that takes us through to instruction, the progress monitoring report, middle of year data. Ms. Flores.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Kraft. Uh, tonight I bring to you the, uh, results of our middle of year testing for all of our diagnostics and universal screeners. Again, our primary focus is always in supporting all of our students every day. Uh, we are dedicated to collaborating respectfully with all of our stakeholders to ensure student success. All that I will be sharing with you this evening ties directly to our scorecard under student success and talent. House Bill three requires, uh, a common approach to diagnostics and TEA has identified certain tools for districts to use for that, uh, for those requirements. For pre-K, we use Circle and for grades K through two, we use M-Class by Amplify and NWEA MAP for Math. So to align with House Bill three, we have created a goal within our local accountability system in our scorecard under student success. So for early childhood proficiency, by May twenty twenty-five, we will increase the percentage of K through two students scoring at or above benchmark at the end of the year on universal screeners in reading and in math from seventy-nine percent to eighty percent. And I'll show you where we are as of today. In the provision of high-quality full-day pre-K for four-year-old students, districts must collect data regarding student progress in five different areas: language and communication, reading literacy, writing, math, and health and wellness. These assessments are conducted at the beginning, middle, and, of the end of the year. And all of these assessments provide our teachers with a holistic understanding of each student and assist in providing targeted instruction where needed. This chart illustrates how our English pre-K students rated holistically in the five areas. We did see growth in all areas from the beginning of year except for health and wellness. And what I understand is that we had several students enroll mid-semester and it does take those littles to, time to acclimate to classroom rules and to self-care. So we, we understand that slight dip in that, in that area.
Larissa, question, you know, these, this is pre-K, reading, but they're not reading yet, are they?
So reading has to do with, uh, letter naming fluency. Can they name the letters and how quickly can they do that?
So these are three or four-year-olds that know their letters? Oh, okay.
And how fast they can, they can recall them. For our Spanish pre-K classrooms, with these results, we saw growth in reading, writing, and math with slight declines in language and health and wellness. Again, we had some students enter, um, mid-semester and because of the numbers of the students assessed, there's only, these are only four classrooms across the district, so one or two students does make a huge impact on the percentages. So again, uh, very similar to what we saw last year at this time. Bernie ISD administers the state-adopted literacy assessment M-Class, DIBELS in English and Lectura and Spanish for grades K through two to measure reading development and comprehension at the beginning, middle, and end of the year. Areas assessed for this assessment is phonemic awareness, phonics, word reading fluency, and for our second graders, they do get comprehension assessment. This data includes both the English and the Spanish assessments, um, combined. Our dual-language students do take both assessments in both languages. Okay. So we did see great gains in reading from the beginning of the year. The orange bar represents our beginning of year data. The blue bar is our middle of year data at or above benchmark. And I added the black bar, it, that is our middle of year rating, uh, from last year, just that you can see the comparison. So for our students that are not yet at benchmark, M-Class does provide teachers with small group and individual student instructional recommendation. It, the program comes with a whole library of targeted intervention that teachers can just pull from to use with, uh, students in small groups in order to get them to where we need them to be. MAP Growth, which is a nationally-normed and independently-verified screener for math, is a comprehensive assessment tool that helps us make data-informed decisions on student progress. All students K through five take this assessment three times a year, beginning, middle, and end. Again, the orange bar is our beginning of year rate, the blue bar is our middle of year rate, and the black bar is the comparison from twenty twenty-four at the same time last year. You will see dips in math and those are to be expected. The middle-of-year assessment assesses all of the standards and not all the standards have been taught yet. Same thing, we saw the same thing last year and we were able to see the big gains at the end of the year. We are anticipating the same. So where are we right now as of, as of middle of the year? We did make some slight gains and so we're inching towards that eighty percent. So right now we stand at seventy-three point three percent at or above benchmark for reading and for math.
And you mentioned that the mid-year is based on the full curriculum.
For the math portion, that's correct. Mm-hmm. So as a district, we continue to build on our staff. There are several things that we've done in order to make this progress from year to year. And so one of the things, uh, several of the things that we've done is, one is we continue to build on our staff's ability to interpret data. It's extremely important for teachers to know and own their data and our instructional coaches at each of the campuses really guide that work for them, uh, to help them understand it, but not only to know your data, but how do you reflect on that and how do you make actionable steps to meet the needs of our students? So those instructional coaches and our principals are powerful with that. The other thing that we have done differently is teacher calibration. This assessment is quite unique and so what, uh, TNL has done, we've, I've sent out a team to work with campus principals, instructional coaches, to work with the teachers so that they could calibrate to make sure that across the district, we are administering the, the test the same way, uh, and also to understand the assessment in a deeper way so that we get truer results. Okay, so that's one. The other thing that we've did this year is we established K through two PLCs. We were able to get all eight elementaries to align K one and two teachers', uh, conference planning periods across the district. What that does, that allows us to via Zoom have planning meetings, uh, from, at the district level with all teachers and of course our instructional coaches help facilitate that. Uh, when it comes to reading, we're very focused on decodable texts. This also allows our teachers across the district who may not normally have, see each other, be able to co-, uh, collaborate and share, uh, best practices. And the other thing that we also have done, uh, in the area of reading is our emerging bilingual instructional coaches. We have been able to help us, uh, implement an explicit and systematic phonics curriculum for our Spanish-speaking students, which we did not have last year. So that is another area that we are trying to work on in order to get our students to where they need to be. So these efforts we have seen have, are resulted in improving teaching practices, stronger student outcomes, and greater alignment across the district.
What are the teachers, uh, what's their feedback in regards to the K through second when they have that collaborative?
It, uh, you know, the first couple of times, it was a little rocky. It was a little clumsy. We're trying to figure out the technology. But, you know, as we've gone through, I think we've gotten some good feedback, um, but we're always listening to our staff and when they say, hey, why don't we change it this way? We listen. And so we always are trying to improve and make those tweaks for them.
Great. Thank you.
Next will be, uh, iStation, which is our reading instrument for kindergarten through eighth grade. So the slides that follow categorize our students into distinct tiers. Each assessment has different cut points for each level. Tier one is, uh, really universal core instruction. Tier two are students who are, are those that not making expected progress in the core curri- curriculum and so may need more targeted intervention. Tier three students receive individualized intensive interventions that target the student's skill deficits. So the twenty and the five percent that are noted there are just recommended national norm percentages of students that should be receiving those levels of instruction. So iStation was able to provide us new reports this year that indicate how we compared to last year at this point. And we do see a decrease in tiers three and two with an increase in tier one, and that is something we do want to continue to see. This is for English, our English assessment.
Larissa, uh, go back to the previous slide. Um, if I'm, if memory serves me correctly, in past years, we might have seen a one or two percent improvement in tier one. This is, this is six percent. This is a lot. Uh, is there any specific thing you can point to or multitude of things? Because that's a very encouraging number.
Again, instructional coaches have been vital in this and making sure that teachers calibrate, making sure that teachers are administering the assessments as, as, as they are intended. That right there helps quite a bit.
Cool.
Our Spanish, um, results for K through five, we did see a decrease in tier three and a slight decrease in tier one. Again, it's very, um, comparable to last year at this time. They're also, uh, iStation was also able to give us a comparison to the state. So this is, this is only for, uh, schools that use iStation within the state. Um, and we were able to see a decrease again in tiers two and three and an increase in tier one compared to the other school districts that use this product.
Okay, not every district uses iStation, but don't they have to use some kind of metric?
Other, um, screeners out there.
Okay. So, all right, so every district uses some sort of screening.
Something different, yes.
Do we know how many districts do use istation?
I believe the last count was, uh, around three hundred school districts that use this. Moving over to, uh, mathematics for grades three through algebra one, we do use MAP for the upper grades as well, and then we use iExcel for, uh, middle and, um, algebra one. So again, MAP grades three through five, the orange bar is the beginning of year of at or above benchmark, slight gains in third and fifth, but compared to last year at this time in each grade level, either trending the same or with slight increases. So this is good compared to last year. Uh, MAP is a nationally-normed test given to over eleven million students annually. Students scoring above the fiftieth percentile are ranked above the national average on math proficiency and achievement. And so the average achievement levels for middle of year across K through five for Bernie ISD are all above the national average norms. For iExcel, this is, uh, there was, we saw minimal movement within the tiers for our students, which again, uh, for our middle and high school students is prob, it's where we expected, but we are very proud of that algebra group. You can see even that two percent increase in tier one at middle of year is quite significant. I will note, our eighth graders did not take the assessment, uh, due to the assessment load they have throughout the year, so we were very mindful of that and so we opted not to ha, give them a middle-of-year assessment since they do take too many, too many tests. And so how is this data used? All of this is used to create targeted, uh, intervention plans of the ca, for campus improvement. Data points are used in setting campus goals and drive campus professional learning to monitor and adjust instruction. And it's also launching points for teaching staff to plan for appropriate learning design.
The professional learning communities are now aligned with K through two.
For, for those grade levels across the district, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was going to ask about the other grade levels and how that was working right now.
So they're all different, um, so we have to divide ourselves to get to the sta, to the campuses as often as possible. It's very difficult because every campus has a slightly different schedule and different needs. Um, so doing the K through two was monumental and huge.
But they still have them campus-wide, correct?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I'm so sorry. Yes.
No, yeah, that's good.
I love that you're doing that with K through second. I think that, you know, especially when the kids are younger, parents can move to different schools within the district and it just kind of builds those building blocks and make sure that the kids can go to any campus and they've all gotten that building block at the, no matter which school.
Guaranteed and viable curriculum across the district.
That's good. I love all that stress for just to be better and better at these younger ages when phonics is so important. I'd be curious to see how this affects long-term, putting this much focus on phonics. I think it's a really good thing.
Absolutely. Currently at fourth grade, so in a couple of years when they're in middle school, we'll be able to really see.
Right.
The reading assessment, the iStation deal there, so we've got the one slide where it's kindergarten through eighth and then kindergarten through fifth Spanish, and then the next one is state comparison, which shows us favorably compared to everybody else with iStation. What's that state comparison? What grades are in that data? Is that?
That is the K through eight.
K through eight? Okay. Um, that's kind of a cool slide there because, I mean, it just shows that, I mean, some of those kids are older, right? But it shows that even at a very young age, our educators are just, you know, doing a, uh, lack of a better term, superior job than other districts, you know?
This, I believe, is our fourth or fifth year with the program, so our teachers are really owning it.
Well, they're, they're teaching it well. I mean, if that's, if that's how they're assessing, they're just, they're, they're killing it. So, uh, that's kind of, that's kind of fun there to see, at least in a sense, how we're doing under third grade in comparison to the rest of the state, you know? So it's just in those really early ages, at least partially.
Do I move on? Yes. Okay. The next one. Good evening. As required by Texas Education Code, I present to you the District's annual report for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. As always, our primary focus is in supporting every child every day. All that I will be discussing this evening ties directly to our scorecard under student success, talent, and fiscal responsibility. The District's annual report is a compilation of several reports divided into eight sections. And we're going to start with the largest section, which is known as the TAPER report or the Texas Academic Performance Report. The intent of the Texas Academic Performance Report is to inform the public about the educational performance of the district in each of the campuses compared to region and the state. The TAPER report will, will present the campus performance information as well as student staff and financial information as required by statute. This data is compiled from PMS Information Student Assessment Data. It is then published as a PDF on the TEA website and it is linked here in red for your reference, both the District and all the campus TAPER reports. For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we had a recorded ten thousand, nine hundred and ten students. And illustrated is our racial, ethnic distribution as well as our percentage of some of our sub-populations. Twenty-eight point two percent at risk, seven percent emerging bilingual, twenty point eight percent economically disadvantaged, ten percent gifted and talented, and fifteen point eight percent special education. This chart illustrates our student population by grade level with ninth grade being our largest class at nine hundred and sixty-five. A large portion of the TAPER report includes comprehensive data from the STAR assessments. As reported earlier in this semester, in this year, uh, the percentage of approaches, meets, and masters on all grades and all subject tests are shown here and BISD is well above the region and the state percentages. In the area of math, we test students in grades three through algebra one. Again, BISD's percentages are above the region and the state. And again, in reading, we test students in grades three through English two. Again, BISD's percentages are above the region and the state. Now academic growth, domain two of our accountability system has academic growth and that is, uh, defined as the percentage of students making expected growth in reading and math from year to year. So the state has set metrics of what a student is expected to meet when they go from third grade math to fourth grade math. And so the percentage here shows how we ranked last year, uh, compared to the region and the state in those two subject areas, reading and math, from twenty-three to twenty-four. So that is a decline from the year before and that is something that we are very focused on this year and working with the campus administration staffs and teachers to, to work on this.
Larissa, I have a, I have a, a question on that, you know, if, and not that we don't need to go back to previous slides, but when you see the difference. But when you see the difference between our district and region twenty or the state, when it comes to approaches, we're about fifteen percent higher than the region or the state. When you reach meets, we're, we're like twenty-five points ahead. And when you reach masters, we're like way beyond, way beyond. But then you see the, the growth, the growth gap between us and other districts is smaller. Is that because we have such a higher edge in the meets from the previous year or the masters from the previous year?
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, yes, because it's harder to make the progress if a student is already at the meets or masters level. But you should, but those metrics should be, so it's, it's, maybe at the next meeting I can go over in a little bit more detail. But there is a whole metric system of how it's expected to, how a student, if you're already scoring at this level, then you're expected to, yeah, to grow. Now accelerated learning, also known as House Bill fourteen sixteen, those are our students that were not successful on the STAR exam in twenty-three in either reading or math. And how do they do, I'm sorry, went ahead too fast, and how did they do in twenty twenty-four? So as you can see, thirty-nine percent of our students that had failed the year before in reading and math were successful. We are not very happy with that percentage. That's something that we're going to continue, again, to work on, to grow, to make sure that our students are passing. If we don't catch that early, then they become E O C retesters, and that is something that we want to avoid. The TAPER report also sections out STAR data for our bilingual ESL and emerging bilingual students. So this chart shows the percentages of approaches, meets, and masters on all tests from year to year. And again, you will see a downward trend, just like across the state, and, and we were not unique in that. We all, we all experienced slight declines in those areas. Our bilingual students were no different. But there are several reasons for that. Number one, the redesign of the STAR assessment. Those questions are at a much higher rigorous level. So it's, it's much more about students having to apply and synthesize and then show justification for their answers rather than just filling out a multiple choice. So number one, the test itself is much more rigorous. The TAPER also reports on attendance, graduation dropout data. This data does lag a year, so there are results from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I'd like to point out the chart with the diploma types on the right. Foundation no endorsement is currently at three point five percent. I will note that the class of twenty nineteen's percentage was sixteen point six percent. So I'd like to commend the high school principals and the counselors for really working on that and making sure our students are graduating with endorsements. And you can see the percentage is great. Our attendance rate has gone up from ninety-four point five to ninety-four point nine. And even that, any point one percent is huge, so that's great. I also noted on here are C T E completers. A C T E completer is a student who completes, passes, and receives credit for three or more high school C T E courses in a program of study. And so that's an excellent percentage for a district our size. C C M R, TAPER also reports on college career and military readiness. We have had four-point increase from the class of twenty-two, so again, this is the class of twenty-three, to ninety percent. Our A P results, dual credit, and T S I continue to be above the region and the state percentages. So again, last year, the class of twenty-two, our C C M R percentage was eighty-six. I will note that our I B Cs, which are industry-based certifications for our C T E students and programs of study, went from twenty percent to twenty-nine percent in this year. We continually are working on that. Section two of the report has to do with the financials. All revenues, expenditures, and disbursements for district and all campuses are linked here for your reference. Section three has to do with our accreditation status. Since there has not been a release of A through F ratings in the last couple of years, this is from twenty-two, twenty-three, we are accredited. Section four has to do with campus and district improvement plans, which are linked here for your reference and were approved by the board in October of twenty-three. Section five has to do with the reporting of violent or criminal incidents. We are required to report on any violent or criminal incidents that occur on any of our campuses. And for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, zero incidents of this level occurred. We also have linked here our prevention interventions that we use throughout the district. Section six, as part of the annual report, a report on student performance in post-secondary institutions during the first year enrolled after graduation. This is the class of twenty-two. And if they enrolled that fall, spring, and summer, they were able to be tracked, and then there are G P As that coordinate with that. So for example, at Champion High School, there was four hundred and ninety-two students, and the dispersment is listed there. For Bernie High School, we had three hundred and thirteen. And this information comes from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. Section seven requires each district to include, as part of its annual report, the progress of the district in each campus and the district toward meeting the goals of House Bill three in early child literacy, mathematics, and C C M R. So for early childhood literacy, the percent of third-grade students that score meets grade level or above on STAR reading will increase from seventy-three to seventy-four percent. So that is our current goal. For twenty twenty-four, we did meet it. Same thing for math, our percentage at meets grade level, we want to go from seventy-one to seventy-two percent, but for twenty twenty-four, we did meet our goal. For C C M R, it's still unofficial, so I cannot, it's still pending, because again, that data does lag a year.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Can we go back to the slide before that, the one before? Sorry. Oh, sorry. So on this one, I'm just, just looking at the numbers, and this is fantastic. Out of our hundred and eighty-nine kids who went to a four-year public school, and I guess if you total the two-year, two hundred and seventy students, right, then scored, you know, like a three-point oh or higher, that's fantastic for their semesters at school. I think that really shows how we're preparing the kids for college, so hands off to your team.
Hands off to the teachers at those high schools.
Definitely, because they're doing a fantastic job. So thank you, just wanted to point that out. It's fantastic.
I understand the not trackable, but what is the not found category?
So not found are graduates with an I D number that were not found in the specified year at Texas Higher Education Institution. So they could be out of state, they could be private, so. So also linked here, section seven for House Bill three goals, just so that you know and for your reference, the goal presentation's back from August to twenty-four regarding C C M R in our early childhood presentation that was delivered in November. And then just so that you are aware of where our goals are set for this next, for twenty twenty-five. Now, section eight is the glossary. And so currently, the TAPER does not include scale scores, A through F ratings, distinction designations, or special ed determination. Because of the initial release, does not include the campus or district accountability reports, the issuance is still pending litigation. So all of these resources will be online on our website, so after this, I have two weeks to post this to our website. Paper copies will also be available at the district central office and on each campus in the district. And for questions, anybody can contact me. At this time, Mr. President, I'm requesting a public hearing for the B I S D twenty-three, twenty-four district annual report.
Perfect. Before we open up the, the public hearing, does anybody have any other questions, comments for Ms. Flores? Good to go there. Okay, well, so it is eight oh eight P M. And at this time, we'll open up the public hearing and take comments from the audience. Does anyone have any comments regarding the report? Seeing no one, we will close this out, the public hearing at eight oh eight still. Great job. Yeah, you know, I always love the TAPER report because it's always good news, you know? With the, it, it just shows how great, you know, our staff is, how you, how great a job you guys are doing and all of our principals and teachers, and it's incredible. Yeah, great, it's a, yeah, twelve hundred member-strong team, and you guys are killing it for our students, and our students are doing great. And they're obviously a very driven group of people, but. Had a question on the, back to, let's see, the slide where we go through the STAR bilingual ESL, emerging bilingual, all grades and subjects from twenty-three to twenty-four, you know, as you noted that the, the test changed and became, became much more rigorous. Is, what, what's your opinion on this? Is this a better, is the test better now? I mean, is this a better baseline that we can work off of? And it's giving us better, more, or more accurate data on this subpopulation? Or, I mean, is this something we can like, okay, now we, we really know where we're at, now we build on it? Or is it just, the test is just not as good?
I really don't have an opinion on, on the effectiveness of the test, I mean, because there's, you can debate either side. But I think that it matches our standards and the level, and to the level of teaching that we should be at. And so our bilingual students, yes, they do struggle. They struggle with the language, and as the test has become more rigorous, it's a lot more difficult to understand. And so, you know.
Yeah, okay.
On this test, though, that he's mentioning, is when we talk about bilingual ESL, the ESL specifically, how many languages? We have not just Spanish, now we have.
So I believe in September, we reported thirty-four.
Okay.
I don't know what it is today, because it does fluctuate. September, it was thirty-four.
And Larissa, how does that, I know we, because we got a report a few months back on Tellpass, and there was significant improvement. How does that fit into what you just shared with us?
So the STAR exam and Tellpass are very different. Tellpass assesses language proficiency in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And so for emerging bilingual student, it's, even a student who scores at the advanced high level will never be at the same level as an English proficient student. And so we have to understand that. So again, it, the Tellpass assesses the ELPS, which are the English Language Proficiency Standards. The STAR assesses the TEACs, the two very different things. So yes, while we're making progress with language proficiency, we still have a long way to go with our bilingual students and, and their achievement on TEACs.
Okay, but being able to function in a different language, because I mean, the, the growth was dramatic in, in Tellpass.
It was.
And that tells me that they're learning how to function in the English language.
Two very different assessments, very different approaches to how students need to take the assessment. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Okay, let's see. TAPER, so we're up to Dr. O'Hare.
Garrett, I think we have to approve the TAPER report.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. If anybody, I would entertain a motion to approve the TAPER report.
Still moved.
First and a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, the TAPER report is, is approved. Okay, now, Dr. O'Hare.
Thank you. All right, good evening, President Wilson, Dr. Kraft, members of the board. Thank you for having me here this evening. I come before to talk to you about a proposal to adjust secondary attendance zones specific to the development at the collection at Bernie. So we're going to do a couple of things. We'll talk about the demographic report, we'll revisit it just a little bit, because there's two main benefits to this request. One of them deals with enrollment, the other one deals with alignment. Then we'll consider the proposal to adjust the feeder pattern for the new development, the collection at Bernie, and we'll discuss some of our next steps. So if you remember, we got a mini update recently from PASA, our demographer. This chart focuses on the middle school results of that report, what you can see here, and, and the secondary, sorry, the middle, and the high schools' results of that report. You can see here are capacities of our campuses in that first column on the left, where they were at as of snapshot of the, when we did the study. And then you can see how they're, and each campus is predicted to grow, its enrollment is predicted to grow over time. When we hit blue, as the color code on this chart, that's when the campus hits a hundred percent of its capacity. And when we hit purple on this chart, that's when the campus hits a hundred and twenty percent of its capacity. And so what you can see here is that the first two campuses to reach a hundred percent of their capacity are Bernie Middle School North and Bernie Middle School South. And you can see here that Voss Middle School stays under capacity all the way throughout the end of the chart through twenty thirty-three, twenty thirty-four. So the basic takeaway from this chart from the middle school perspective is that we have space at Voss, more so than we do at North or at South. And then from the high school, you can tell we've got, we've got space at both the high schools for a little bit longer. So the collection at Bernie, to give you an idea, these are our current zones, the same snippet of our current zones for our elementary, same map section for our middle schools, same map section for our high schools. To orient you to the maps, that kind of black thread that you see moving from left to right through the middle, that's forty-six. So that red circle right there that you see on the elementary map, that is where the collection at Bernie is located. If you remember last year when we adjusted our elementary school zones, very late in the game, one of the last adjustments that we made is we moved the collection of Bernie out of Herbst Zone and into Sybilow Creek Zone. So when you think about that from an alignment perspective, the rest of Sybilow Creek goes to a different middle school right now than the collection at Bernie. Currently, the collection at Bernie is zoned, because it's north of forty-six on the middle school map, it's zoned to Bernie Middle School North. They would be the only kids that, at Sybilow Creek, that would end up at Bernie Middle School North. Similarly, the same thing happens in the high school. They're the only kids at Sybilow Creek that would end up matriculating naturally, of course, without our high school choice to, to Bernie High School as opposed to Champion High School. So because of that, for alignment purposes, we don't do that that often. We do split elementary schools, but we normally split fourteen, fifteen percent of the school. This is not as big of a percentage. So those students will have a better experience by traveling with their peers from Sybilow Creek to one of the two middle schools that Sybilow Creek feeds into, which would be Bernie Middle School South, Voss Middle School, and then on to Champion High School. And so what you'll see in our proposal recommendation is because of the previous slide where the space is, we're recommending that we rezone that section, the collection of Bernie, to Voss Middle School, because there's more space in that school in the foreseeable future than Bernie Middle School South. And then again, also to Champion High School. Just to give you an idea, we're not talking about a lot of students here, the potential impact. This is also from the demographer's mini update, the collection at Bernie is a duplex development. It's got two hundred and fourteen units all total. PASA, depending on the development and the price point, predicts how many students per residence will end up, how many household, how many students will end up being generated by the number of developments or units in the household? So they're point two-nine for the development, so for every duplex they, they put up, we generate point two-nine of students for that. So what that will do is, and you can see here in twenty-five, twenty-six, they're predicted to complete forty units. That'll generate about twelve students. Now that's twelve students pre-K through twelve, and we don't exactly know what age of those students are going to be until they move in. So it could have up to a twelve-student impact for the secondary schools, but it could be less than that because some of them could be elementary students. And then you can see in the successive year, hundred units are completed, twenty-nine total possible students, until it builds out all the way in the end when they get to two hundred and fourteen units and about sixty-two students, year over year, coming from that particular development. So that gives you the idea of the scope and size we're looking at here. All right, so if the board approves our recommendation this evening, our next steps would be to follow up with the collection at Bernie development to communicate the change. And that way, the developer would know what schools, that the kids are zoned for, so they could pass that information on to prospective residents. We'd update our district website and software systems, we'd update Skyward so that students would be matched to the appropriate campus when we did our enrollment. Transfinder shows students would be mapped to the appropriate bus routes and so forth to reflect the change. And we'd follow up with the campus, campus leadership teams to communicate the change, so they can give good information to their families.
And just to remind everyone, there's no current students in this development, so this is completely proactive. So I think that's great, so they can continue through school together. And even our demographic report says that we could have more sixth graders moving to Bernie than kindergartners, so I think it's a smart move.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Dr. O'Hare, I think, I think this makes sense. It makes total sense to move it, so I appreciate you doing that. The only thing I would request is when we look at demographer reports, and I'm not sure if they break it down. I know in their projection, they break it down by school and what that school will have at their projection. I'm not sure that they do that at the slower rate of growth. But that's really some. But that's really something we ought to ask them for because next year, the gap between their projection and the slower growth model is 160 students. This year it was 132. And where did we end up? Smack in the middle. Where did we end up last school year? Smack in the middle, actually closer to the slower growth. You know, I'm a little skeptical that we'll reach the projection number that they're, but you know, who knows? I'm not a demographer. It's just reading, reading some of the subdivisions that they expect to be developed, which may never be developed. And I can think of a couple in the district in particular. But I, I would like to see in the future, not just their projection, but if we could see the slower projection as well. Because by the time 33, 34 comes, the gap between the slower growth model and their projection is almost 2,300 kids. That's, that's a pretty big gap. And we'll be making decisions in that nine-year period of time as to when to build a new school, how to add schools. And obviously, we're not going to do it just based on a formula for 10 years down the road. But that does inform us regarding land purchases and other things. So the more that we have, the better. And like I said, I'm not sure that, that Pasa provides us with, do you know offhand?
We don't have it for the mini update. We could certainly request it. They're pretty good at providing that stuff to us. Because you're talking about the 10-year projections on the reduced enrollment model.
Right, right.
They gave us the grade level breakdown, but not the campus breakdown for the mini update. But they're pretty good if we request it. I'm pretty confident they'll hand it over to us. They give it to us in the full update.
Okay, yeah, it's not something we need right now, but, but, and next year we're due for a full update, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I move to approve the changes to the middle school and high school attendance boundaries for the collection at Bernie as recommended by administration.
Second?
Got a first and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. O'Hare. Good stuff. Dr. Kraft, did you want to?
Sure, I'll give an intro, definitely. So the next item we have on the agenda is for the board to consider and take possible action to adopt a resolution regarding road improvements. So I'll ask Romero Guerrero to join us at the podium. And as you know, collaboration and coordination with our city and county partners is a priority for us as well as the infrastructure improvement. So Romero can give a quick summary and turn it over for discussion.
President Wilson, Dr. Kraft, Board of Trustees. Before you have a resolution for your consideration. Now, as a summary to the situation that we find ourselves in, Bernie ISD purchased the property for Viola Wilson Elementary School. On purchasing this property, we also entered into a development agreement that gave us certain things within this agreement, utilities to the site, things like that. But it also was going to give us the widening of Corley Road. Now Corley Road runs behind the campus. Now, it's, this road improvement will help us in order to be able to get the flow of traffic. Now this flow of traffic, it will send the buses behind the school. Therefore, it opens up the traffic flow in the front of the school. But more importantly, this, the, the exit in the back would help the campus, the kids, in case there's an emergency. If there's a situation that we have to evacuate the campus, we have to evacuate the kids, staff, we would like as many options as we can get. Now, in saying this, we also have to understand that we were expecting this. This is something that we were expecting even before we bought the property. And the developers having a hard time getting the, the county to approve this road widening. Now, on January 14, 2025, the Kendall County Commissioners met, considered this item of widening the road. Now Kendall County needed a unanimous vote to widen this road. Unfortunately, the vote was four to widen and one against. This resolution would express the needs, the concerns and the support for widening Corley Road. Any questions?
So when you say this is something we were expecting, is this something that the developer had already spoken with the county about? Or is this something that we ourselves, kind of, I guess I just want the background on?
So when we purchased the property, we purchased it at a premium. The premium, we, we felt that it was worth it because they were going to bring in all of the utilities. They were going to let us use their detention ponds. They were going to widen the road. That was the agreement that we had. This situation is actually a situation that the developer is working with the county. We are in support of this because we see the benefits that we, as the school district, would, would, would get. And so it was all, when we submitted our drawings, when we submitted our, our prints, our plat, all of these things, it depicted the widening of this road. Therefore, we felt confident, but as people change, in the county, in the Commissioners' court, we, again, we, we, we came up with, with an obstacle.
So some of that land, ours that we had allocated to widen this street?
Yes, we had allocated a certain amount of, of land to allocate to be able to widen this road. And therefore, it would be easier for the county to widen the road.
And that's land that we purchased, that we allocated for the road widening?
So to back what Mrs. Gonzalez Cooper is saying is, there's no condemnation of any property necessary?
Not on our, our part, no. We actually, we actually provided that land.
We're providing the land for the widening of the road. Now, what would the ramifications, are there any financial ramifications to us? Should there be a delay? Because I know all these development agreements talk about a timely widening of the road. What would the potential ramifications be financially to us and therefore the taxpayers if this does not get rectified?
Well, within the contract that we used to build the elementary school, we had our contractor tying into Corley Road, the widened Corley Road. Right now, at this point, they can only offer us a credit because they cannot tie into it. And in not tying into it, when you ask for a credit back, we are, we are definitely not getting what we paid for. And therefore, it's costing us the change order gap there that, that we so often see at 30% to 40% that we are losing.
Is there, how do we, is there a quantifiable number? Is it 100,000, 2, 3, 400,000?
Well, we have asked the general contractor for a credit. They have not provided that yet to us. There's, they're telling us that, that they are partners of the district. And if it's a timely issue, that they could work with us. But that, that gap is closing very quickly because they've, they have already demobilized from the campus.
So if it's, if it's, if the time is narrowing, therefore, that's the impetus for us to ask for the county to speed up their decision?
Exactly.
And if they do not make a timely decision, we could lose a significant amount of money.
Exactly.
Which is taxpayer money.
It is, it is. And, and we, we start to see how important it is for us to work together with the county and to be able to see eye to eye when it comes to, to the joining of our drive and Corley Road. Is they, they could be at different elevations. And if we miss it, or if we take a chance, we, we, we could potentially even incur more cost to fix it.
Okay, so there is, there is a definite cost factor. And I, we do have the editor of the Bernie Star here in the second row. Hello, Jeff. Saturday's issue of the Bernie Star, there's a wonderful article about the EMS Sheriff's Office moving in a new facility in, in Bergheim. That's on land owned by the district that we leased at a dollar a year for 50 years to the county. And I think that speaks of the beauty of collaboration between governmental entities. Because I did ask a county commissioner, I said, what do you think by, by entering into this agreement, how much do you think taxpayers saved? And he said, well, we needed to do a smaller detention pond. We didn't have to build the road, the entrance road, because it was already built by the school district when we built Voss. So that saved the money. And then, of course, instead of having to buy three acres or three and a half acres of land, which has now gotten expensive even in the county, he estimated at least half a million dollars. That was his estimate, at least half a million dollars. So that's the beauty of collaboration when governmental entities work together. And I would endorse your view that we encourage the county to continue this spirit of collaboration because ultimately, it's the taxpayer that wins. The beauty about what's happening at Voss is not only do we have on our school site an EMS and a sheriff's substation on the campus of one of our schools. It was the only school that was more than two minutes away from a sheriff's, sheriff's station or police station. Our two schools in Fair Oaks, they're right there, okay? Bernie City, it's, it's close to South and Kendall and the other schools. We have SROs. I mean, it's, it's a great situation. So Voss was an exception of this. So this solves that problem. Not to mention the thousands of residents of Kendall County that live in the eastern, northeastern part of the county, from Burgham all the way to Kandalia, now have much closer access to EMS service, which is great. So collaboration's good. It's good government and it's good for the taxpayer.
I want to echo what you're talking about. I mean, it's one thing to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. And I think, you know, we, we've shown that with our relationships and I hope we can continue to show that with our relationships with the city, the county, you know, including Fair Oaks, any entity that we work with. I think we've done a really good job of that and I, I really look forward to continuing that. And we're tasked with that. But I think our number one task is the safety of kids and providing that. So can you elaborate on the fire requirements? I, I mean, I've talked with some PTO members and parents. I know pickup there is, you know, those times, God forbid, if something happens. So you're, you're right. As the time goes on, the constituents that we represent are going to be caught, you know, it's costing them money to, to do this. But almost more important to me is the safety of those kids. Every day that goes on where this isn't done, that goes up and I, there's not enough money to overcome that loss.
You're absolutely right, Dallas. And you know, when you drive through that subdivision, I drive through there every couple of weeks and I've stopped counting homes. They're, they're at like, I think about 150 occupied. There's got to be at least 50, 60 homes under one level of construction. And those things go up in four or five months. So by the time school starts in August, it would not surprise me if we have another 80 to 100 homes occupied. I think our demographer report mentions that they expect about 150 homes a year to be sold in Corley Farms. I echo that. I think that's going to happen. Because I'm blown away, they didn't start construction on their first home until November of '23. And here it is, like 13, 14 months later, and they have 150 homes occupied. This is amazing. They're going up, they're selling like hotcakes. So if we have an issue today, it's only going to grow dramatically, hence the need for timely resolution to this issue.
As far as the timing, is this something that we just really had to open the school and see how it was flowing before we had a definite answer on if we needed it? Or is this something we've needed since we, since day one?
When we planned the, the, the campus, when we plotted it, when we looked at our safety plans, everything included that road being widened.
Okay.
And, and we, we, we were waiting and we were, we were discussing with the developer, when are you going to get started? When is it going to happen? But at, at that point, it was already, it was, we already knew that it was not going to happen, even though we were going to open the school.
Okay.
And correct me if I'm wrong here, we deeded an easement to the county just for the purpose of widening that road.
Exactly, we did.
Other thoughts, comments?
Well, I mean, I see we have a resolution here.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and, if there's no other comments, but we can pick it up afterwards. But I'll go ahead and read, read our resolution here. So this is the Bernie Independent School District Board of Trustees Resolution. Whereas Bernie Independent School District and Kendall County have consistently collaborated, collaborated to build and maintain a partnership for the purpose of enhancing efficiency, economy and safety for the constituents of the shared communities they serve. Whereas the Bernie Independent School District currently operates 11 educational institutions that serve the constituents of Kendall County, Texas. Whereas the safety and well-being of students, faculty and staff of those educational institutions are of paramount importance. Whereas the availability of reliable and well-maintained roads plays a critical role in ensuring accessibility as well as timely and safe transportation of students, faculty and staff to and from educational institutions for the purpose of fostering educational opportunities, reducing absenteeism and promoting academic success for all students. Whereas investing in the improvement of roads has been shown to prevent accidents, reduce traffic congestion and ensure the safety of pedestrians, particularly in school zones. Whereas the Bernie Independent School District operates Viola Wilson Elementary School located in the Corley Farms Development in Kendall County. Whereas pursuant to a development agreement dated December of 2021 between the developer of the Corley Farms Development and the Bernie Independent School District, the developer is required to construct at its sole cost and expense certain road improvements on Corley Farms within a specific timeframe. Whereas those certain road improvements on Corley Road have been anticipated by the Bernie Independent School District as they play a crucial role in facilitating the safe and efficient operation of school buses for the Viola Wilson Elementary School, especially during the high-traffic student pickup and drop-off times, which will directly benefit the Bernie Independent School District's students, faculty, staff and parents, as well as the residents of the Corley Farms Development. Whereas in the event the road improvements on Corley Farm, on Corley Road are not constructed by the developer within the specified timeframe, any increased costs associated with the road improvements would become the responsibility of the taxpayers within Kendall County. Whereas the Bernie Independent School District and the developer of the Corley Farms Development have diligently collaborated and cooperated in an effort to fulfill the obligations of the development agreement within the specified timeframe. Whereas the Bernie Independent School District dedicated a right-of-way to Kendall County to support the road improvements on Corley Farm pursuant to instrument number 2022-368-084 dated May 16 of 2022. And whereas Kendall County has unfoundedly halted the road improvements on Corley Road. Be it resolved that the findings and recitals in the preamble of this restitution are hereby found to be true and correct and are hereby approved and adopted. Number two, that the Board of Trustees of the Bernie Independent School District recognize the importance for Kendall County to take immediate action to remedy the situation and find a solution to finalize the road improvements on Corley Road to ensure accessibility to as well timely and safe transportation of students, faculty and staff to and from Viola Wilson Elementary School and further urges Kendall County to do so. Three, that the Board of Trustees of the Bernie Independent School District recognizes that additional delays to the finalization of the road improvements on Corley Road will cause cost overruns, unnecessary expenditures and wasteful use of public tax dollars that runs counter to the commitment to collaboration and efficient use of tax dollars. Four, that the Board of Trustees of the Bernie Independent School District respectfully requests that Kendall County act in the best interest of the taxpayers and overall community of Kendall County. Number five, that it is hereby found, determined and declared that a sufficient written notice of the date, time, place and subject of the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Bernie Independent School District at which this resolution was adopted, was posted at a place convenient and readily accessible at all times to the general public for the time required by law preceding this meeting as required by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. And that this meeting has been opened to the public as required by law at all times during which this resolution and the subject matter thereof has been discussed, considered and formally acted upon. The Board of Trustees further ratifies, approves and confirms such written notice and posting thereof. Any more questions or comments?
I have one question. In the second, whereas, whereas the Bernie Independent School District currently operates 11 educational institutions that serve the constituents of Kendall County, Texas, we do have 11 that are physically located in Kendall County, but one of our schools that's located in Bear County does service students from Kendall County. That's Fair Oaks Ranch Elementary. I don't know if, I don't know if that is germane to this, but the the kids from the back 40 who live in Kendall County go to school at Fair Oaks Ranch. So I don't know if we should put 11 or 12. Whereas Van Rob is all, all Bear County.
I'd be in favor of changing that to 12.
So I would just propose we amend it to 12.
Okay. Okay, so we've got a small amendment on the table.
Second.
With that, under consideration, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Amendment?
So moved?
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Great. The motion passes seven to nothing. And thank you, Mr. Guerrero, for all of your expertise on this and the good, great presentation there. And I'd also just like to thank the four county commissioners that, you know, voted for the widening of the road and appreciate the work that they're doing there, so. Okay, let's see, next up, we've got the Corley Farms. Okay, so business report, we've got the monthly financial report. Mr. Scott.
All right. Good evening, everybody. You've been given a portion of what you normally receive for the monthly business reports for the month ended January 31, 2025. A little bit unusual report this month. I'll give a brief explanation of that. Our employees are all paid 12 cents. Whether they're salary or hourly employees, they anticipate making up for work. I'll just break that out all times. Everybody works a different calendar and everybody earns at any time in the year, depending on the the class structure of that employee, a different amount paid through that. Probably like myself, I have a June 122, excuse me, July 12. Whereas a teacher, their, their, starts school. Well, how are, what accounting system does is it takes what everybody is paid and then calculates the pay. Normally, throughout the year, incurred a liability, accounting perspective, we owe those employees. So that majority of our employees, including our teachers, that, a, they have earned all the day that they're going to pay. They're going to receive a check June, August, until they start their next contract. And what they're, we've recognized from an accounting perspective, all that expense, all of those accruals on a month-to-month basis are handled in our, our year. What we found out when we looked at the January reports is that Skyward is not able to take any of that like we get. Nutrition, when I'm doing, if, uh, nutrition fund started off, that was, created our revenues, seeing that slowly come down as the year progressed. January, I ran the report. We looked into it, found this error. We contacted Skyward, checking out them every day. Doing, I've got active numbers to give you. Almost every single fund that, they're all, they're all wrong. So, so in the meantime, you've been given a report of your, your budget amendments, your, your donations and your tax collections. There's no budget amendment on, uh, January, so we can skip right past that. District did receive $6,600 in that donation month. January, we're very thankful for each and every dollar, hour, good and service. January reported, if District, you see that, that we collected a little over 92, almost 92.6% levy, a little bit more than last year. What I've noticed about that is that since 20, you know, prior to 2022, consistently, that's when my interest rates shot up, a little bit less timely, far as, early days. But I've also, up back here, this is 50 basis points higher than it was two years ago. So we will continue to monitor tax collections and work with the assessor. I guess the final comment I wanted to make back to the, that in no way affects how, how people.
Yeah, Wes, thank you for this. I mean, we have, it just underscores, we did collect over 10 million in in January, but what it means is that we've collected about 83, 84% of our tax levy from October through December. So they get some kind of discount for paying early, whether it's 3% in October, which is about 70% of our money coming in, or 2% in November. It's, which is a good thing. I mean, I love, I love saving that 3%. I mean, you know, I tell all my friends, say, pay your taxes early, save the 3%, because it's really a 12% annualized when you think about it. But how is, I mean, today is the 24th, so it's fairly late in February. How are, how are collections looking for this month? Do we have any idea?
I am, I am personally not aware at this point. I've seen some collections, and they, they're, they're normally dropped quite a bit in February. See.
I think what's worth noticing, you'll see all the board members, that last year, 2023, we ended the year with 1.6 million that had not been paid between adjustments to property values, et cetera, the adjusted levy, and what we've collected, over two-thirds of that is wiped out. So we're pretty successful at collecting past-due taxes, particularly when the property eventually sells. If a property sells, you could collect taxes going all the way back to 2015 or whatever. I mean, right? I mean, yeah, we, we get some, some old money coming in that way.
I got a question for you on the system to, the lunch system. I know there were some issues as far as the percentages and what that was going to be charged. And we're going to look into some different ways. Can you give us any updates? Or we have something coming on, on a better, how that system might improve moving forward?
We're under a three-year contract with that, that sale company. I've been very pleased with the results of that out of the mid-year changes. We did communicate to the community how to drastically lower fees. But you can limit those fees by using E-check.
Yeah, I, I hope everyone can take advantage of that because that's, that's definitely going to save some people some money in the long run.
There are no more questions or comments. I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the budget amendment donation report and tax collection reports as presented.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Okay, lastly, we've got future business items. So a couple of different things potentially there. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.